Everybody, March 26, 2019. I thank you all for coming. I think we're gonna start our meeting off with a pleasure of leisure, so. Stand up, please. We are meeting. Thanks. It's a pleasure to be here today.
.................................
If you do want to, if you are being recorded, I also bother to ask, is anybody else recording us?
I'm sure.
We need to know. I also thank Westwood Media Center for being with us, for working, keeping these public notified of everything we're doing here. So, I'd like to start off with a superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. So, actually, I'll take it slightly out of order. I thought I would start with the student recognition portion tonight. So, I am pleased to announce that we had thirty Westwood High School students who were recognized for achievement in the 2019 Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which are sponsored by the Boston Globe and the School of the Museum of Fine Arts. So, thirty students were recognized, and those thirty students collected forty-seven awards, multiple recognitions. We had eight gold keys, fifteen silver keys, and twenty-four honorable mentions. So, very impressive. And I won't read all of the names, because there's a lot of kids, but the gold and silver key award winners are listed here. There are some other smiling faces. And I would welcome people to take a wander down the hall here to the gallery space where we still have a lot of this work on display from our encounters with yours last week. So, that's exciting, and just...
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Like, we have so many people coming in, they're like the town meetings and things.
Yep.
Is there a chance to have like an exhibit when all, a lot of people coming in?
Mm-hmm.
Do we appreciate it together?
Yep. Well, so, we had our big event last week, and we leave it up for some period of time. So, if you go down tonight, we'll turn the gallery lights on in case members of the public are here, and I think we'll keep doing that for the next few days, at least. And then, sticking with the art theme for a second, I also wanted to recognize, we had four students from the Martha Jones School who submitted entries for a poster contest that was conducted to celebrate Youth Art Month. And we had four students who were selected as winners. Their artwork has been on display at the State Transportation Building down in Boston. I think tomorrow is the end of the exhibit, so there's still time. And those students were Owen Fengler, Colin Hennessy, Alexa Endy, and... ...... Also. So, congratulations to those students as well, and to their parents.
You're a true student.
It's not my chance.
We are proud of them. Okay. So, next, I wanted to give an update on our MSBA project. So, we've taken several steps since our last meeting. As you may remember, just before, our last meeting was just before the MSBA board meeting on February 13. And at that board meeting, Westwood was officially voted into the feasibility study. So, we moved on the eligibility case into the feasibility study, which is very exciting. As a result of that vote, the school building committee held its first meeting, and at that meeting, the school building committee appointed a subcommittee to conduct the OPM selection process. That process is now off and running. So, we have submitted our OPM RFS to the MSBA, how many acronyms can I come up with at once? For their review and approval, and we just heard back from them today with their feedback. We can quickly turn that around, because we will be placing an ad in the Central Register and some other places April 3rd. The RFS will be released, and at the end of April, the subcommittee will actually be reviewing candidates' packages, interviewing, and taking care of that process. We are hoping to secure a spot on the MSBA's June 3rd OPM selection meeting agenda. So, that's not guaranteed at this point, but we're doing everything we can to try to get that date. If for some reason we're unable to get on the agenda on that date, we would get bumped, presumably, to their July meeting. Trying to get it. We've been doing some other things as well. MEA and our Director of Operations, Ken Aries, and I met with Tom Gilde, who's the town's energy manager, to get his input on the RFS, talking about some opportunities with Eversource. And we continue to try to do a good job keeping the community sort of apprised about where we're in this process. So, we sent a letter to the community via our school department listserv, the town's listserv, the Western Wire, and then also the town newsletter that actually gets mailed or copied to all of the residents. And I want to remind people that on our district website, we have a webpage that's dedicated, oops, that's not it, that is dedicated to the elementary building project, and we are updating this in real time, so people can see all of our correspondence there and documents that we've submitted to MSBA and whatnot. It's all there. Two groups.
Do you have any requirements to say, like, citizens reaching out?
Um, no. I have not, actually, to tell you the truth.
You mean citizens?
Like, yeah, parents, residents.
Like, what's happening?
Yeah.
Of reaching out to want to apply, or reaching out just to question?
No, just questions.
I mean, I attend some PTO meetings, and that context is...
Yeah.
No, so, no, I'm not seeing things pop into my inbox of questions.
So, why weren't we making the selection of the project?
So, that would happen, so, we would complete our interview process at the end of April, and then we have to submit a bunch of paperwork associated with that to MSBA. That June 3rd meeting is when you make the selection. Is when the OPM, it's when the MSBA...
Here's your selection.
... through their process.
But you would've already made the selection.
We would say, here's what we're thinking.
And is that made by the whole committee, or is that a subcommittee decision?
Um, well, the subcommittee is charged with scoring the presentations and rank ordering them, and, you know, it's a prescribed process that the MSBA has.
Right. Right.
You can't find contrast if you, unless you have the MSBA's sign.
Proval.
Right.
Please take one name.
No, we have to, we submit a bunch of rank order tall to that information.
So, once the MSBA approves the OPM, the process then begins, where we have meetings, community meetings go at home.
So, the next step, after we hire the OPM, then we start our next selection process, which is to hire a designer, an architect. And so, that process will take us to probably the end of September, as I recall from the timeline. And then, that would be the moment where we would be ready to start some of those community forums. So, you know, what we've been told is that it's important to have your OPM and your designer on board to really be part of that process.
And the OPM would help you with the selection of there?
Yep, there on, yep.
The process of looking at the three options we've considered, that begins with looking at...
Yeah, I mean, that's what the purpose of the feasibility study is, and so that will be a part of the process. The other piece of information that we got, which is very good news, is that you may remember that as part of the eligibility period process, we submitted what's called the capital and maintenance plan, and the MSBA uses that information, because it's possible to get what they call incentive points on the project reimbursement rate. So, the maximum you could get is an additional two percent. The average that communities receive is between 1.4 and 1.5 percent, and we were informed that Westwood has qualified for 1.93 percent, based on what we submitted, which is clearly great news. And so, I really want to thank Heath Petracca and also Ken Aries, our Director of Operations, because they are the folks who literally put together this information for MSBA, and what they are capturing in that report, of course, reflects the work that's happening every day around things like capital, planning, and maintenance. So, very much, thank you very much for that.
Can I just recap this, remember it goes, so, we were told something like 33, 34, and just keep 33, 34, and 1.9. Is there any additional, like, green or anything else we could get on that?
Yeah, I think we, that's the other, that is the other thing that you can get. You can get some incentive points for things like that.
Okay. What was our, what was our, 33, 34?
I think our base was 34.
34.
Uh, no, I don't think so. Okay, you're close. I rounded.
Round. Thirty, sure, thirty. Okay, that's right, thank you.
I wanted to just make one point, that I've gotten a couple of questions from the community about, you know, we have these three options, and I think a lot of people were a little confused, because they said, well, I think the feasibility period is when we come up with the options. So, where do these options come from? So, I just wanted to make clear that we have, you know, as you've said multiple times, it's a very prescribed process, and Hamlin, we were only allowed to submit for one school, so we submitted for Hamlin. So, any solution had to involve Hamlin, and that really drove the three options. And I'm just sort of saying this so that everyone, you know, understands that these three options were really the only possible options we had, given the prescription of the MSBA process and their requirements for the options. And we also, and under each one, there's also going to be a myriad of suboptions. So, I think it's going to give us the maximum information about each school that we could get, and that really was the goal in the feasibility phase. So, I don't, you know, I just want to make clear to everybody that this was not, we have no project in mind. This was, these three options really were designed to give us the most information we can at the end of the feasibility process. That's when we will hopefully come up with...
Yes. So, if I could just further add on to that, because I think that's an important point. So, the three options are, just do something about Hamlin, or do something that involves Hamlin and Deerfield, or do something that involves Hamlin and Sheen, and that's pretty much every combination we could think of, right? There, we didn't have the opportunity to study putting all three schools together, because the eligibility period with MSBA is about determining what they call a design enrollment, which has to do with sort of their budget and what they can contribute to, and that would be beyond the scope of what we could get reimbursement for.
And all the discussion of MSBA is to get state money.
Yes.
That's what we're doing. All is, and the figure is 33.95, that's the percent we might get of the total cost of the project. So, if the project, it's like a third, possibly, is state money, so if it's a $60,000 project, you possibly, you know, you could get a third of that from the state.
Right. I do think it'd be sixty million. Never, sixty thousand might be...
Well, you know, just, you throw that number up, but that's what all these numbers mean for people who are familiar with what we're talking about.
And also, just to make clear, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the final project has to be on the Hamlin site.
Correct.
Right? We could look at the Sheen site, we could look at the Deerfield site, we could look at the Hamlin site. And again, this is all part of trying to get as much information as we can out of this feasibility phase. Exactly. So, I just wanted to...
Thank you.
No, that's important. Thank you.
I was chairman of our committee, by the way, the MSBA.
Congratulations. You're doing a great job.
All right. So, anything else with that? Move on? Okay. Secondly, I wanted to let you know where we are with the security audit. So, the security consultants have completed their assessment work, and they provided the school department with a draft report with their findings and recommendations, and we're now in the process of reviewing that report, which is comprehensive, so there's a lot to read. You know, after sort of a quick look at it, I would say the report certainly recognizes many good practices that we have here, and many good security features that are already in place, so they note those things. And then, it also presents some action steps and recommendations for us around, I'd say kind of three big buckets. So, things that I would characterize as like security equipment or technology, physical infrastructure, some recommendations around additional training, and then also some suggested changes in protocols. So, we're taking a look at those. They did hopefully identify a priority level for each of their recommendations, because I think there's a recognition that it's not possible necessarily to do everything at once, and so it is helpful to have some sense of what is more important. So, everything is rated to a priority one, two, or three. By the time you get to priority three, it's phrased more as like, you might want to consider this. So, we're taking a look at those things. What's tricky about this is that, you know, I think it will be important to talk about some of those action steps at some point publicly. On the other hand, it's clearly like counter to the goal of increased safety and security to discuss our identified security vulnerabilities publicly, like, that doesn't make sense. And for that reason, legally, this report and the committee's discussion of it is exempt from open record, uh, public records and open meeting laws. So, I think we have some work to do internally, first, to digest it and to make some decisions about what's first in timeline, and then I imagine we'll have some things to say about that. Frankly, some of the things that they've recommended that I imagine we will do will be apparent to people, like, they will be able to see the equipment or people will experience H-H and protocol, so I think folks will notice it. So, where we are, as you know from our prior discussions, there's a supplemental appropriations article at this spring's town meeting, and if that article is approved by residents, it would provide an additional $100,000 in the FY19 appropriation this year for the school department to begin implementing recommendations under review. And so, we talked about doing it this way, because we knew back when we were developing the budget in the fall that we wouldn't have the recommendations. So, this was sort of like a placeholder to make sure that we now don't have to wait to go through another budget process. And so, you know, we are assessing the recommendations certainly with that money in mind, and I think we'll be able to make a lot of progress with that, with that funding. The other thing that's just kind of serendipitous is on March 12th, the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, their Office of Grants and Research, released a grant opportunity for public schools and charter schools. It's a competitive grant process to, quote, "address critical infrastructure, equipment, and technology needs as it relates to school building, security, and safety expenses." So, we saw that come into the inbox, and we thought we should take a look at that, and we are finishing up that grant application. We do think that there's one particular recommendation in the report that's very on point for the grant criteria. So, that grant is due April 3rd, and we'll find out on April 26th if we get it. For communities this size, the maximum grant we can apply for is $60,000, so it'll block that.
How can you apply, Mark, if we have a potential conversation?
Well, it's only in draft form, and so that's all the agenda for today.
I'll have...
To talk about that?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be talking about that. But the thing we have in mind, you know, we chose a priority recommendation, and I would say it's the thing that fits the grant criteria. So, there are limitations. So, that is... Next, I'm going to turn over to Alison, for a few minutes, to talk about the meco director search process.
I am excited. We actually just sent out an announcement about three finalist candidates for our meco director election. A big search for us, and we've had a director of the place for 26 years, so you have that kind of longevity of history in a district, and there's a change, that's a big deal. We've had a very kind of positive inclusive process, and we've had a lot of fun. The committee with some faculty, our principals, four parents, four students, and also represented from the meco headquarters, which is also under new leadership in this state, is also kind of taking a kind of new tack in terms of their leadership around the meco program. So, there's a lot of energy around it right now. Our candidates are exceptional, fourth finals round, we have three individuals, a person coming out of private ed, another individual who is a city director in their district who might be convinced, convinced to come here, and a third who he has some really interesting experience both in school districts and other parts of the country, but also overseas. So, they all bring something different to the table. Their visits to the schools start tomorrow, they'll be visiting tomorrow, Thursday and Wednesday. In addition, we set up a meeting in a parent forum in Boston to make the event more accessible for our Boston parents. That'll be at BU on Thursday evening, so each of the candidates will be able to talk for a few minutes, answer some questions, it's just a chance for a little bit more interaction, so. Yeah. Any questions?
I thought we have only three co-sisters?
We have forty-nine right now.
Yeah, high school versus?
Oh, I'm not going to be able to tell you that off the top of my head, but I should look at it. It's a test to get down, and we're close to an even score, so, and we've given here.
How young are they?
It's sixth grade through 12th grade. I actually spent some time today talking with Cheryl below about sort of the history of the program. We're trying to do the timeline, because here in Westwood, the program has been elementary all the way through high school. It has been only a high school program, and then, under Cheryl's leadership, it re-expanded to kind of capture the middle school. And she was telling me actually that Cisjoudi was sort of the original host parent. She said there were like five football players who, sorry, Steph used to drive back and forth and shuttle from practice and feed massive amounts of food. I can really imagine how you met, and that, so, I'm kind of trying to reconstruct some timeline things, because they're an elementary session, so, yeah.
Great. This is awesome. And finally, for me, I just wanted to give you a kindergarten enrollment update, and so the numbers here are actually updated as of today, so they're slightly different from what was in your packet. But...
I think it was kind of...
Yes, yes. Totally get it. So, the registration deadline for kindergarten was March 8th, and so, the reason I'm just bringing this up now is that that's just another benchmark that we have about how, what our kindergarten numbers are shaping up as. And so, what I have here is what we had projected for kindergarten enrollment during the budget process, and as you recall, those are really based on census information that we have about kids who are the right age to start kindergarten, who are currently living in town. And so, then the second column shows you how many students are actually registered as of today, and then, so now, the last column, the adjusted projection, the way that we've adjusted it is, of those known students who are eligible from the original projection, some of those have informed us that they are not sending their kid to kindergarten. Either they're not sending him this year, or they're going to private school, or, or in some cases, moved, right? So, the adjusted projection includes everyone who is actually registered, plus anybody we know about in that projection that we haven't heard is not coming. So, in the adjusted projection, we're still assuming you're coming if you're not registered, and we haven't heard from you at that point. And you can see that the number of kids who have registered, as I said, have gone up in the last couple of weeks. I do want to clarify, all of those kids that are now accounted for on the screen but weren't in your packet are kids that we knew about and who were included in that projection. It's nobody who's moved. Nobody who's not coming at this point. So, I just put this up to say, you know, it's interesting for us to kind of keep track of how this process goes, and clearly, this number is still in flux. Some of the numbers are lower even than we sort of thought that they would be at this time.
It's spring market.
And it's spring market. Clearly, these things could change over the course of the spring and the summer, so we're going to keep monitoring them, but it's a good example of how there are just a lot of moving parts, and we need, we need to hold off on making decisions longer, because we may be making decisions based on not real information as a state's game.
So, projection, just remind me, projection for budget when you did it in, whenever, December, what was that based on? Was that on census?
It was on census, which is how we got it.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, everyone can see these numbers, and if you look at them, the biggest, you know, the simple estimate delta, the biggest delta is obviously at Hamlin right now, which is not, yeah, which is much lower, the other ones are, you know, similar, a little blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, that's, that's based on real information, so...
And so, that's same with 24. So, we actually understand, so the 36, I understand that, okay. So, does that mean you've had 12 people say they're not bringing their kids to kindergarten?
So, no, it's, but we have had about seven or eight say they're not coming to kindergarten. But what we're including still in the adjusted is the people who are in that census number who we haven't heard one way or the other from. So, they're still in the, we're assuming they're coming, projected. Does that make sense?
Well...
So, why is it 24?
So, Hamlin is 36 projected, which was based on Dally's numbers and census.
Yes.
You've got 24 people who have signed up saying they're coming, they're showing up in September, then adjusted 24.
Yes, so, so, correct. Yeah, you were correct.
Okay.
So, we apparently had that number of people.
Okay.
Yep, I'll have to go back and ask John, I mean, the numbers are changing at all.
Okay.
Last I heard, I thought equally we had like eight people who had said they're not coming, but perhaps that's gone up.
They've reached, okay.
Yep. And that is, I would just observe, that is a big number. We are struck by the number of people in that district who have said they're...
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. That was rare.
Because actually, on the whole, I mean, other than Hamlin, you've actually got seven more people that are adjusted than it was when you had them back, and you exclude Hamlin, the other four schools, I'm just kidding, but, I don't know. It is...
Yep. Keep your slide around. And keep in mind, I mean, one of the things that we talked about here, the budget projection, is that when we thought about the budget, we tried to make sure we were budgeting for something that had nothing for birth.
Our next segment of our program is public participation. We welcome people to come and offer their comments, suggestions to us, because everybody here tonight would like to participate in the public participation. Raise your hand if you'd like to, just please identify yourself, your street address, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name's Amanda Phillips. I live at 13 Webster Street. I'm following up to the letter that the Hamlin parents sent to all of you and our comments from last meeting. I just want, for everybody, excuse me, everybody to know that it's still really important to us that we come up with a feasible plan for next year's second grade class. I think the class size is large, it projected 23 kids per class, but I also just want to kind of hammer home the point that it's two-thirds boys, and I think that a lot of parents would agree that the mix of kids is somewhat challenging. So, in addition to the numbers, I think dealing with classroom management is something that a lot of parents are concerned about, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, on 169 St. Paul Street, and part of the contingent, I'll set the Hamlin, like to keep you on your toes, I guess, with the kindergarten helmet, and I'm a parent of a first grader, rising to second grader, and I'm just here to represent our group. Hopefully, you received our letter, and just here to represent the concerns, and I have a student who is not in an IEP or have accommodations, but, you know, falls out for special health and literacy, and I think she's a child who in an older classroom could get kind of lost in the mix, so it's important to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much for coming tonight, sharing with us your thoughts, I appreciate you. We're now ready to move into some discussion items. First, the proposed price increase for the food services.
Thank you. So, I'm going to turn it over to Vinnie Cordell, who is our Director of Food Services, and Vinnie is here tonight to talk a little bit about the food service program, but really to ask for your consideration around, in the phrase of our school lunch, and I will leave it to Vinnie to give you more information about that. Vinnie, will you sit down there if you hit the button on the microphone?
Good evening, and thank you for having me here today. The Westwood Public School Food and Nutrition Service is dedicated to advancing children's health and our physical well-being by providing nutrition meals, promoting education and encouraging physical fitness, striving to encourage lifetime and healthy nutritional choices and habits. Over the last three years, we have, over the last three years, we have improved lunch service at every school level. We have added healthier lunch options, and we offer a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables, available upon request. Just to give you a few examples, we offer gluten-free options such as pizzas and deli sandwiches, and we also make all of our salads in-house, so each school is actually preparing everything that the kids are eating at each school. We have rolled out a healthy corner option. Whenever scheduling allows, we put out there an assortment of vegan and vegetarian options, and this was well-received by the high schools. And this was well-received by the high schools, and they really got fond of it. We have been exploring other venues for extra income. Last year, uh, we provided lunch service at Intrepid Academy, at Health Reservation. This was approved by schools, uh, high school students from Boston. Uh, we provide them lunch daily. This enabled us to earn extra revenue from our program with minimal investment, uh, from our department. We basically didn't charge them for, uh, the payroll that, that, that the worker went, uh, to provide them with lunch. If the academy is hosted again at health next year, we will be providing lunch to them. Many of these kids actually highlighted the quality of food and the level of service that they received, they experiment while attending health. It's very nice to hear from them.
I went to a final presentation by those students, and the lunches were specifically called out as highlights, so congratulations.
So, Westwood Public Schools is a part of the National School Lunch Program. So what is the National School, uh, uh, National School Lunch Program? It's a federally assisted meal program, uh, operating in public, and then also non-private schools and residential, uh, childcare institutions. Participating school districts receive cash subsidies and also USDA foods for each reversible meal we serve. In exchange, um, we are required, as, as a participant in the National School Lunch Program, to serve lunch that meets a federal menu pattern requirement, and offer lunch at free or reduced price to qualified students. Uh, those requirements are serving of protein or alternative protein, uh, grains, fruits, vegetables, and milk. Three of those items must be present at every tray that everybody, anybody that comes here has a lunch, um, in any school level. Um, this slide here, uh, shows where Westwood ranks in comparison with surrounding districts. Um, as you can see, uh, we're way up there, uh, low there. Um, Nierum is the only one that has, uh, lower prices for us, uh, from the neighborhood. Another requirement for the National School Lunch Program is that we cannot charge or should not be charging less than what the federal, um, reimbursement rate is. Right now, that stands at three dollars. Uh, we currently vote below four cents on that cost. Uh, this slide here will show, um, the projection of each year, and going back as far as twenty fourteen. The federal reimbursement then was two seventy, we were, we were averaging two eighty-one. Fast forward to where we find ourselves now, the federal is, uh, government is giving us three dollars for every, uh, free meal that we serve at the district. And we are averaging two ninety-six, so the trend continues to be. Uh, this is a bit of a projection as to what it means to go up a slight amount. Currently, the charge, uh, the prices that we are charging, we are averaging two ninety-six again. If we were to increase our prices to the, uh, to the, a small increase of three dollars to the elementary and three fifty at the middle and high school, um, you will earn us that much more for the next full year. So, why is it time for a price increase, you may ask? Going back to the original point, the federal reimbursement is three dollars for a free meal, two sixty for a reduced, uh, lunch. Our average price is two ninety-six, again, four, four cents below the federal rate. We have had not an increase in elementary schools in ten years, um, and it has been five years for the middle and high school. We have increased our procurement of fresh ingredients and allergen-free products. Uh, as our customers, our students, um, get more educated with what their demands are, then we also need to up the, up, plenty a little bit. And also, which this is not secret for anybody, right, the cost of living increases, those are passed along to the consumer. And this pays for all this time it has been, Westwood Public Schools, so. Thank you for your time, if you have any questions that I may answer for you, please, let me, thank you very much.
Chris, any feedback?
Yeah.
We'll be talking about the distance, counselor.
Uh, Chris, I love the, the lunch options at school. I, I went today to buy lunch, and I actually had salad on the way, um, and it was great to see, it was like the first salad bar. I know a lot of my friends are out of town, um, they don't have a salad bar, they don't have a, a horse head deli, they don't have, you know, um, fresh options. Everybody talks about like the fresh, um, salads prepared on the site, which I think is really nice. Um, I think go make your own sandwich, I did today. I like the, the deli is also an option that I go to, so, really love it, so, I think today, you know.
Get feedback from students, if any, much ideas or suggestions?
Well, they're always given interesting, actually, today at Hail, we did a presentation, uh, uh, excuse me, at Hailman, we did a presentation of, um, newer items and see what other things are, are out there that are exotic, and, uh, and we serve, uh, star fruit. Uh, and also, we made him, uh, a table of french fries made out of beans. They're, they're not deep fried, they were baked, and, uh, they also have enjoyed it, so they, you know. Our, our customers are getting more educated and, and different than our customers to, to bring some new ideas to their home.
So when, if in the high school, when you go in and eat, you can order whatever you want, you don't pay too much, that's the average?
That's the average, so, once we grab elementary school totals, middle school and high school, add in that by the amount of meals we serve, then we come up with an average.
Okay.
The high school right now is three twenty-five, the rate.
Do teachers have access to the?
Teachers, teachers have access to that, and, and if their meal includes protein, it's five dollars, if it does not, it's four fifty.
So when you're in the high school, though, you don't, I mean, no matter what you order, it's not, I mean, not everything?
So, so we have an upgraded, uh, we have an upscale lunch.
Right.
And that is the deli counter.
Yeah.
And that is a made-to, made-to order custom sandwich. And so that, that has other ingredients and costs more, so that one is, is, is a premium lunch, and that costs five dollars. It has gone with the milk, the juice, the food, and all the vegetables, and.
So that's the top item, five dollars?
That's, that's it, yeah.
I'm just curious, something about vegan lunch being offered once a week, uh, why is it only once a week?
Well, it requires, it requires staffing, and that's very challenging.
Really?
Yeah, so we need to have a dedicated person there that needs to put this, all of these items are, all of these menus are put together specifically for that purpose. And so, not only is it very popular, but it's also time-consuming. So before we can run, we have to learn how to crawl, right? So whenever the staffing is available, last year, we were, we were, we were, uh, we were pretty consistent with it. So we continue to sort of look forward to having a class session because it did, it, it did, um, it was well-received by the students.
I love the meat and cheese.
Do the teachers use it much, uh?
So, yeah, no, faculty went great over, um, yeah, um, you know, I don't think ever, they ever saw an avocado toast presentation at a, at a, at a.
Avocado toast?
Yes. Absolutely, four fifty or five dollars.
That's a bargain.
Yes.
Do you think with other directors like yourself of other towns, with ideas, you know, is there an opportunity to?
Well, my, my background is that of a chef, and so I'm always looking for new things and how to improve, you know, that wheel, so it's not as squeaky as it once was. So I, 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 uh, I do share some information with some of, uh, some of the food service directors from other towns, but, you know, um, most of them are still pretty stuck in the chicken nuggets and chicken patties. Well, it's, 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 it's cost-effective and, and, you know, they have to do what they have to do. And popular, yes, I tried one, five years ago, I still, I still have it, so I couldn't do it.
I would just add that you were very helpful in supporting with our allergy committee, and with that sort of consideration as we think about continuing a consistent investment in the quality of the food. You've done a lot of work there, so I keep doing.
So, in the elementary schools, does that food ship, cook somewhere else and ship to the school?
Well, there is, there is one item, and that probably would be three to four times a week, what they call the main meal.
Yeah.
Okay, outside of that, salads, sandwiches, and pizzas, uh, gluten-free pizzas, gluten-free sandwiches are the, that's our location. But say we have in Taco Day, um.
Where's that cooked at?
Uh.
Where's it cooked at?
So that's, that's prepared at the high school, we call that our central location, and so that is shipped out in, in a hot box.
Okay, so, different question, so if you wanted to, I'm just making this up, if you wanted to spend, I'm not saying we would, it's four dollars per meal, and you put say it's three dollars, you could do that. There's no federal requirement, in other words, if we wanted to charge, I'm, if we wanted to charge three twenty-five, get three dollars, and spend four dollars, we could. Is there any federal regulations that we couldn't do that? I'm not saying we should, I'm just, it's more of a question.
No, there, there is, and the, the, the only federal regulation on that is that we cannot be less than what they're giving us, uh, as a reimbursement for a free meal, uh, for a free or reduced meal. So, and we are right currently four cents.
I do just want, I'm, so I don't know if you know this, but, so the, the food services department is self-sustaining, and it's like a revolving account, right? So it's not as if, and I'm not suggesting, I don't think this is what you're suggesting, but we couldn't say, let's try to make this a profit center and then hire a teacher, right? Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking the opposite.
The opposite, yes, okay, right.
Any more questions? Vinnie, what, what are you suggesting, an increase by what amount for us to, I suppose we need to vote for an increase, right?
Yes.
What would you like to have, based on what you've seen?
So, I think that, I think that, uh, a good start, I mean, I would like to see the middle and the high school, uh, sort of equal. And that has been the trend in other districts, uh, because at that age, you know, pre-teens kinda, and then into teenagers, they still, they eat more than actually in adult, uh, so. Um, they, the portions and quantities and the quality, um, is actually something that, that we're sort of putting out there for the middle school as well, oh, definitely for the high school. But the middle school also is, is sort of experiencing that now. Uh, we have them, we're giving them individual pizzas, so they're not longer have to share a, a whole pie, like they have their own presentation. And so, three fifty for that middle and the high, and, and three dollars for the elementary.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the requested officer for maybe, maybe second? I don't think they'll vote on that anymore, I didn't want to discuss it further.
Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm supporting the motion, I just, I would just support, thinking about when you get to next fiscal year, what are the additional amenities that you could add? You know, like people can say, you, promoting like, oh, we're now doing, I don't know what it is, avocado toast. I would just think about what are the additional things, and that's in you, just think about what are the additional things people are getting for that value?
Absolutely, yeah, and I mean, we, we can definitely look into that. And I mean, uh, you know, in, in the bigger jump from the middle, in, to the middle to the high price at three fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, so, so that we don't have to do this next year because the costs keep inching up, right? It's two ninety-six now, the next year is going to be even more than that, so, you know.
I hear a motion, I'd second it, uh, like, uh, you're voting, who's in favor of the motion? unanimous, Vinnie, thanks so much for all the.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Vinnie, thanks very much.
Next, uh, second reading of revised policies.
So we have four policies here that we took a look at first time and have significant discussion about, um, last night, I think. And as you recall, this really is just that we have policies that are related to smoking and tobacco use, and we are now trying to incorporate vaping into those policies as well.
So can I make a motion, please, wait for reading, second?
Why don't we just take each of them, uh, the first one is smoking vaping on school premises. Uh, those, uh, motion to accept that whole thing, make a motion, second. Next, tobacco use vaping. Oh, I thought we did, are you, are you voting?
Oh, favorite.
Okay, second, tobacco use vaping on school property by staff members, I don't know if we have, okay, staff members.
I'll motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Vote, yeah, okay. Moving on, tobacco use vaping and or possession by students. I, uh, would like to propose to accept that motion?
Second.
Those in favor? For herb use, alcohol, or drugs, or vaping at school-sponsored events, until the parents, what motion, second?
Second.
Vote, okay.
Ken just gonna have to watch the video again.
I know.
Okay. And we're now moving on, approval of the minutes, uh, for February seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Are there any suggestions or changes we would like to make? Make your motion to approve the minutes.
I can, some of.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor of the approval of the minutes? Okay, vote to update the school building committee membership.
So, this, like, say we're, um, with Keith's retirement, the end of this week, that's the curse, me, final school committee meeting. Um, with Keith's retirement, the school committee, we, we, we need to remove Keith sadly as a member on the school building committee.
It's on TV now. It's pretty much an error.
He needs popcorn during.
So Keith was fulfilling, uh, an important role on the committee as he is MCPDO certified, there's a certification around to have MSBA procurement rights clause. Um, and we need somebody who has that certification. So my suggestion is that we, um, appoint Michelle Miller-Pack, who is the town's, uh, procurement officer, to, um, to that role. And then in addition, I would suggest that you appoint our incoming director of business and finance, Lemon Chalk, to, to the committee as well. And so the requirement from the MSBA is that within thirty days of making a change, we have to submit that in your vote to the council.
You gonna make a motion?
Motion?
I'll make the motion. To, uh, improve the, 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 the school building.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, vote, good.
Okay. Um, I realized, so the next, I didn't hear around voting to approve the release executive session minutes. We failed to get those to your packet, um, so let me provide some context here. So, um, the, these executive session minutes are related to a discussion that you had in February of twenty eighteen about this surplus land parcel that we're about to look at in a second. Um, and so these minutes, you have already voted to approve the minutes, you already did that in executive session on June fourteenth. But you did not at that time vote to release the minutes and make them public because, um, at that time, the, um, the deal, the negotiation around the land was still in process, right? So basically, I'm recommending that you consider releasing those minutes now because they don't need to be held anymore, does that make sense? And so I do have them here, if you want to.
So you want a motion to release the minutes?
To release the minutes of the executive session, February fifteenth.
Okay, so I make that motion.
Just give me one quick time and take a look.
Yeah.
You approved the minutes, the question is, would there be any reason with, we wouldn't want to be able to help?
Get the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
I'll second, wait, this is the motion to release.
To release the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, all votes in favor? Okay.
So, the meeting on February fifteenth, twenty eighteen, in the executive section, was related to the board of selectmen asking the school committee if they would be willing to return a parcel of land, parcel sixteen dash four five two, to the town because there are residents who are interested in acquiring the land. And so, um, you discussed it at that time and decided that that was fine. Um, but I, you just wanna, I mean, what we're talking about here, so, I can make this a good. Um, so the, the parcel of land that we're talking about is this piece here in green. And so this is the Hamlin School, right here. That, to where it is, is the Girl Scout house, can you picture that, right? So this is Laura Lane. Yes, so.
About the girls.
Yeah, so this little parcel of land, which I think is shy of six thousand square feet, um, is school department land. But because of the very small size and the location of it, it is, it doesn't have any use for us. Um, and in fact, though it has no use for us, we're still responsible for maintaining it. So we're like bumbling it and, you know, whatnot, even though we aren't using it. And so there are some residents who are interested in, um, buying it. So, um, the question before you today is if you would vote to declare as surplus that land parcel at which point it would be returned to the selectmen. And this is, um, related to a warrant article that, um, would be at this Springs Town meeting where the residents would then approve that and authorize the select board to sell it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sell it to the residents.
Yeah, or whoever. Engage in some negotiation to sell it, yes. Right. Um, so, but the first step is that they need the school committee's approval to declare it a surplus and, and return it.
And if, remember, last time we discussed, we found there was no value to school.
Yes.
And we have made relationships with, it's like been on land from time to time, so we didn't see any problem. So would anyone like to discuss it further, any further questions?
So the language for the motion is in your packet because this is a, um, formal, legal thing. So some, yes, whoever's making the motion, we've given you the language of what the motion needs.
I'll make that motion. We have to do this whole, this whole argument?
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, fifteen A, section fifteen A, the school committee hereby votes that five thousand five hundred and ninety square foot portion of the Hamlin School lot, bounded on one side by. that five thousand five hundred and ninety square foot portion of the Hamlin School lot, bounded on one side by Laura Lane, the north side by three Laura Lane, and the east side by eight oh eight Gay Street, as shown on a certain plan of land drawn by Hoyt Land Survey dated October thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and recorded at the North Register date December twenty first, two thousand and fifteen, and planned by six forty-four at age forty-eight, is no longer needed for school purposes and should be transferred to the care, custody, control of the board of selecting for a purpose of sale, of sale, of sale. That's my motion.
Second then. Any discussion further? Those in favor? All voters in favor? Okay. Special education, was there a fund transfer?
So, you may recall that there was a change in some state requirements a couple of years ago about, this related to our Medicaid reimbursement money. And so the town set up a particular account where that money is now received. And the mechanism for the school department to access those funds is that both the school committee and the select board have to vote to transfer the funds from the special education reserve fund. And so we could do this multiple times a year, but what we have tried to do is to go through this process once per year to make the transfer. And so Heath and I are recommending that you authorize the transfer of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the special education reserve to the special education cost account. That will just allow us to access the money.
So you want a motion to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the special education reserve fund?
Mm-hmm. To the, the special education cost account.
To the special education cost. I'll make that motion.
Any discussion for the, those who support? See, no, for the business here, if we are not gonna go into executive session, do I have a motion to?
Wait, we probably do. Because he's blessed me. I, I know I'm the whole school committee and best, and thank you for the service to the school department, to the town. You've been great, and we're gonna miss you, but we wish you well in whatever you're gonna do, so. Thanks so much, Heath.
Very supportive of me for my whole time here, so really, really appreciate the students, parents. I mean, it's a great place to work. I've always said that for this, so, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
We will be doing some festive things, so we'll have to read your words.
Vote to win the, I mean, I like the motion to finish our meeting tonight.
A motion and move to executive session.